Thanks Phil. We'll open the meeting at 7:30. This meeting will be conducted in person at Shelter Island Town Hall. Only vaccinated applicants and the representatives are allowed to attend in person. Proof of vaccination must be shown. The public may join via Zoom. Meeting ID 85164593758. Roll call. William Johnson?
Yeah.
Bill Diorio?
Here.
Lynn Coligan?
Here.
Tom Grafino?
Here.
Lisa Cracker here. Bob Di Stefano?
Not yet.
Okay. We'll review and approve the October 27 minutes. Do I have a motion to approve?
So.
Well, certainly.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright.
We'll move on to the 70 Tut Hill Drive Han application. Christina, do we have any correspondence other than the parking plan?
There was one more letter of support.
Oh, yeah, okay. Do we need to read that in?
No.
Okay, so we did ask Matt Sherman and the applicant to provide a parking plan. And they did so. Who would like to start and open the discussion?
I think it was just amended with one sentence and then it was satisfactory to the association. Is that correct?
Yes, that's what I read as well.
Mm-hmm. We have to have some sort of reference to that document in the resolution.
As like an endendum or attachment?
Yeah, just as a condition.
Okay. Approved parking plan?
Yeah, and that the... And so some of that verbiage from the Tuttle Drive Neighbors Association there. I'd also asked Matt about, you know, after the meeting, I spoke to our resident air conditioning consultant, although he's, maybe I should call him the non-resident air conditioning consultant. And I asked him about the air conditioners being placed up there in the attic, open on the side, and he seemed to think that the sound will carry a lot more than what they would normally carry when you have something down on the ground and there's some vegetation around. And so he suggested that Matt would do a little studying up and come up with some sort of a maximum decibel level. You know, Doug had suggested something along the 65 decibel or lower range. Just because the sound, when it's up that high, it seems like it would travel a lot more.
That's a good point.
And then, you know, something I think that we, you know, I'm not taking a position on this personally, but something that we ought to look at, or at least discuss, because I think that it's, you know, we want to have a fair and frank discussion on this, is the height of the building close to the adjacent property line. You know, we had a hearing on something in the heights where there was a big wall sort of going up very close to the property line. And prior to that, a couple of years back, I know we had one out in Silver Beach next to the Jackson residence and, you know, I do understand this is different because the two adjacent lots, the one on either side, are non-building lots and so, you know, there wouldn't be a home going up there and sort of whatever, having to face that. But I'd love to just get a little feedback from all of you on that. Anybody?
My thoughts are especially with this lot being, having no building envelope, I'm happier with them going up as opposed to out and keeping their, the current foundation. And like you said, the two lots on either side, it's not similar to the other ones because there were, the other ones that you referenced, there were other houses directly next to those buildings that we're looking to go higher. So that's where I'm at.
I'm the same way.
I feel the same way. The fact that it's on that same footprint.
Alright, and then Punch, I was wondering, you know, if you took a look at that parking plan, you know, they had some suggestions about what they're going to put in the front of the lot, a dumpster, some storage, some parking. I don't know, you know, you have greater expertise in this kind of thing.
It's good. Regardless of what they do on this lot, it's tight. They're going to have trouble taking the house down. I mean, trying to keep stuff on their property when they work there. It's going to be very tight. It's not an easy lot to do because it's so tight. Usually you got 20 feet and you got less, what, five feet in one corner? It'll line practically.
Along those lines, can we ask the applicant to put a fence up along the side to kind of contain any debris?
Oh, definitely. I would say we should.
So that's something that should wind up in the resolution as well then. And...
Keep their debris on their property because it's so close to the property.
There is mention of it for the construction build part, but not for...
Demolition. They should be there when they do any work there.
During the whole project.
Like the soap fence out by the water and all that. All the fencing should be done first.
And Punch, and you know the area better than anybody, do you think the parking plan is a feasible thing?
It's long Tuttle Drive Association going with it. I say we let them go because they're the ones that are going to be suffering because it's narrow, that road. But there is places where they got marked, they can pull off on grass. And it's actually the right way up there because the road wasn't built to really two lanes wide. It's built one line, one lane wide.
And the applicant's gonna have to, if there's any grass or anything that's dug up, they're gonna have to fix it.
They're gonna have to fix it.
Dumpster and porta potty, Punch, do you have an opinion on that or that looks okay too?
I think that's the only spot they're going to be able to do it. Like I said, it's so tight there. It's so tight. I mean, regardless of what they do, it's, even if they left the house and had to work on it, it's tight. They shame one neighbor, didn't let them buy one lot and join it to their property. They could have moved the house more in the center, but they didn't want to do it.
Yep.
Bob Giandami?
Does anybody have any other input on this?
Steel's Corners Road Ram. Or would there be any like construction techniques that could be recommended to, I don't know, streamline the process? You know, I'm not very knowledgeable about that, but is there like some recommendation that we could work through with Matt in terms of like methods of construction that are going to be less disruptive? Or least disruptive that maybe we need to put in the resolution? I'm just kind of brainstorming.
You know, Lynn, I like the idea, except I really, I don't want to get in the business of telling people how to build their house.
No, and I don't either. I just was thinking, I don't know, if there's some other projects that have had some recommendations or some stipulations that can streamline the process in such a small area. I don't know, I'm just thinking out loud.
Mm-hmm. Matt? Is it alright if I ask Matt a question here? Lisa?
Go ahead, Phil.
Good. So Matt, you wrote a note basically saying they're considering some sort of panels or...
Yeah. Yeah, there's a couple of different things that we can do from a construction standpoint that can minimize the amount of stick-built construction on site, which therefore minimizes the amount of equipment that has to be stored and the time that you've got more exterior construction going on. We're looking at panelized, which is basically the wall panels, the floor diaphragms, all those bigger portions are brought in as units. And then they're basically, you know, tacked together, put together on site. So that's one thing we're looking at. The other thing we're looking at too is more of a true modular. So you've got, you know, a quarter of the building comes in as one piece and gets plopped in on a crane. It really depends on how the architectural design plays out to see how feasible those things are. I'm pushing for the panelized construction method because it's a good compromise between purely stick-built on-site and it still gives you the architectural freedom to have a little bit wider range of alternatives on design. So it kind of, it strikes a nice happy medium between the two different methods.
I'm happy you guys are considering that. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
That panel method, Matt? When you say build off-site, where do you mean off-site at the construction company? Somewhere else on Shelter Island? What does that mean?
Yeah, it could be any number of different things. It could be at a construction company's warehouse somewhere and then brought in on a flatbed. It could be, you know, kind of like you may have seen when Riverhead Lumber is bringing trusses to a site. The trusses are pre-assembled somewhere else, whether it's at a factory in Pennsylvania or whether it's somewhere more local, and then they're just trucked in and then they use a crane to lift them into place. So the actual assembly area, that would remain to be seen, but it would be somewhere off-site.
Yeah, if any of you are interested in... Sorry, go ahead, Lisa.
I have one more thing that has to do with kind of the construction side of it. In the the construction plan, it says construction material will have to be delivered to the site on a frequent basis. The frequent basis part is a little concerning and I, someone's going to have to refresh my memory if we can put kind of like a timestamp on that because people are going to be coming and going. Like, I don't want someone to be delivering materials at 6:00 PM at night for this project because it's so frequent.
Yeah, the thought on that was we've got approximately a 15 by 20-foot area. Once the new foundation goes in, about a 15, 20-foot area on the roadside of the new foundation. So that's not a lot of storage area. So when I'm thinking on a frequent basis, you know, every couple of days maybe, they'd be bringing raw material in for construction. Whereas if you had more room, you'd be bringing at least half of the framing materials or all of the framing materials at once. In this case, you're going to be bringing a small percentage. So, you know, whereas you'd get two, three deliveries from Riverhead on a given project, in this case, you may be getting 10 deliveries from Riverhead because of the limited amount of space you've got to deliver. I'm not thinking that you're going to be having multiple deliveries in a given day or a couple of days, but you might be having, you know, a delivery a week, a delivery, maybe two deliveries a week, depending on where you are in the stage of the project.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that frequent word can mean a lot of things.
And depending on who the contractor is, if they've got a local and on-island storage yard that they can store equipment at, they may be bringing it when they come to work in the morning at 7:30 or 8:00 in the morning. They show up, they may be bringing a lot of their materials for the work that day with them that morning. But I take your point. I actually really hadn't thought about it from that perspective. But we're not envisioning people delivering things after hours. Deliveries would be, for the most part, within working hours.
Okay.
Hey, so Christina, we have some sort of a basic template that we've used in the past for limiting things so that people, there's nothing going on on Sundays, there's nothing going on, you know, after a certain time each day. I think maybe we should reference some of those things in any resolution.
Sure.
Definitely.
And then one other thing I wanted to make sure that we get in the resolution. We discussed finishing of the basement, other than the couple of spots that they show there. And I just want to make sure that we're closing the door on that so that if, you know, if they ever want to try to do that, they have to come back to the ZVA.
Is that something we also want to do for the attic space as well?
Yeah, I don't think it's actually necessary because it's only seven feet high and so they wouldn't technically be allowed to do it. But Lisa, I think maybe it's a good idea to put that in there, that no finishing of the attic or the basement.
I think the attic piece, the attic piece is important because that was listed as that was going to be where the AC units are.
Right.
Right. And would we say anything about not just not finishing it, but also not occupying it?
Sure, I mean, not, no living space.
Yeah, no living.
Because you could maybe see the possibility that people will be up there at sunset, you know, not just on the deck part, maybe, you know, in the attic space.
Yeah, so no, no living space is, I think, the term.
Yeah, okay.
What do you say, boss?
Does anyone have anything else they want to discuss on this one? And then we'll, if not, we'll go on to our checklist. Good? Hi. So whether the, hold on. Would an undesirable change be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties?
My thought is no. It's going to sort of fit in with the character of the neighborhood. It's going to be a new building. During construction, there may be a bit of a problem, but once the project is done, I think it'll enhance the neighborhood.
Yeah, I mean, this house is built in the 20s and 30s. I'm sorry, go ahead, Lynn.
Oh, the fact that they're building on the existing footprint, I think, is very, you know, helps in that, with that criteria.
And they'll be bringing everything up to code too.
Okay. Whether benefits offered by applicant can be achieved by a feasible alternative to the variance. I think in this situation, it's going to be difficult because there's no building envelope.
Yeah, I mean, they could renovate the house, but any renovation of that house would also require a variance.
Correct.
Right.
Whether the requested variance is substantial?
It is.
Yes, I say yes.
Yes.
Why?
Because it's so small of a lot and so close to the property lines. So it's...
Whether the variance has an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood?
So I think...
Not after construction, it won't.
I think putting in the new septic will actually make it better for the environment there. And it'll be dark skies compliant. It'll be a more energy-efficient home. I just see it being positive for the environment in the long run.
And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created? Yes and no on this one. There's no building envelope, so they have to come to us. But they also, you know, they're looking to expand and upgrade.
Yeah, I would say yes. I mean, they're the ones that want to do the expansion, so it is a self-created problem. Although the, like you say, Lisa, that there's nowhere to go.
Okay.
Should we list the conditions? Or we spoke with them already?
Do you want us to go, Christina, do you have?
It would be helpful if we just...
Okay, so I have, we want to make sure we reference in the resolution, the parking, the approved parking plan. They need to add a construction fence for debris around the property during, for the entire project. The attic and basement space are not to be living spaces. And we also want to reference the timeframes.
Do you want to limit summer as well?
They had...
I don't think that we're going to limit that they can't build during the summer. No, it's...
And I know they were going to try to minimize the construction. Matt Sherman had said most of the construction is hopefully going to happen in the winter. Yeah.
Right, and so I'd also like, Phil? Sorry, I'd also like to make sure we get something in there about the AC units, that they're going to have to be below a certain decibel level. Hopefully we'll get that number from Doug and Matt.
Can I jump in?
Sure.
The Dakin Mitsubishi, there's a couple of manufacturers who have a mini-split duckless type of system. I actually just installed one at my house a couple of months ago. And they're less than 60 decibels. And they're exceedingly efficient. They're amazingly quiet. So if you want to put a limit of 60 on it, I think the one that we put in just now was like at a 56, which is a library conversation is 40 decibels. A conversation at your house is 50 decibels and a conversation at a restaurant is 60. So it's between that house and restaurant conversation decibel level is where these systems are at right now.
Lisa, Tom, Punch, what do you think of that?
Below the 65.
Yeah.
It's below 65 that was initially brought up here in the beginning of the meeting.
Right.
Yeah, I don't think we can specify the mini splits. I think not everybody is a fan of those, but I think we can specify the decibels, right?
Right.
I thought we did something based on Doug's recommendations about the decibels for the units.
So Jerry, the, what the town did was it's like 75 or something like that. And that's for things that are installed close to the house. In this situation, these units are going to be on the outside of an attic, about 30 feet off the ground. And the concern is that the sound will travel much more readily because of where they're positioned as opposed to being on the ground and the vegetation sort of absorbing a lot of the sound. And so we just want to make sure that we're protecting the neighbors and, you know, not having them have to listen to the constant drone.
So should we revise the resolution we did because they might use that as an argument that this is what it says?
I, you know, I think that, you know, when folks have to come for a variance, Jerry, that we can, you know, if it's a situation like this and it requires variance, in cases where it doesn't require a variance, maybe the town needs to take another look at that in terms of things that get mounted on roofs and that kind of thing, especially if it's close to a neighboring property.
Okay.
It's actually, it's fine for the board to take each property as it is and reveal the particularities of that project. That's really what you're supposed to do. As far as this goes, if Matt's come with 60 items...
Well, is that, Bob, we lost you there.
If Matt is comfortable with 60 items, there's a problem.
Okay, so let's, I think 60 then could be the number if that works for everybody else.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, and what about the time-wise working? Five days a week, like eight to five or something like that?
So we have some guidelines that we've used. I think there was something based on what the town did for the Tolkien property. We can use those as a rough guideline. I can't remember exactly what it is, Punch, but I think it's just good for us to stay consistent.
Christina, you have those. Some.
At least in the summertime anyway.
Yeah.
Summer months. Be different after Labor Day if they want to work inside.
Right, you know, I think that's... Right. Right, Punch, I think that that stuff is sort of referred to that, you know, it does specify the exterior work and is a little more loose with interior work.
Does anyone have anything else on this? Okay.
Good, thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Matt? Next application, 12 Emerson Lane. This one was a front porch extension. They kind of wanted to square off their front porch deck area because they had done some construction on the house, which made it too big of a step. Does anyone have any thoughts on this one?
I thought this was rather straightforward.
Were that they were all this easy.
Okay, so if no one has anything, we can go to our checklist. Okay. Whether undesirable change will be produced in character of neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties?
No.
I'd say no. They're just doing a simple squaring off the front deck there to the house. And they're making it safer. Everyone agree?
Yes.
Whether benefits offered by applicant can be achieved by a feasible alternative to the variance? Where the house is positioned, it's hard to to make the death because it's in the setback.
Two 40-foot setbacks. You're on a corner lot.
Yeah, I don't see another way to deal with this.
Whether the requested variance is substantial?
No.
No, it's not.
No.
Why?
It's so small.
It's a small, small corner?
Yes.
Would the variance have an adverse impact on the physical environment conditions in the neighborhood?
No, and as the applicant's attorney told us, it's going to be much better because it's going to be permeable wood as opposed to impermeable brick.
True.
And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created?
It was in disrepair, so I would say no.
I would say yes. I mean, it is, you know, they decided to renovate the house and raise up that room, but I mean, it's not a deal breaker, but it is a self-created situation.
Okay.
I agree.
I agree.
I found the resolution for the...
Do we, do we want to put any, do we need to put any conditions on this one? I don't see any, but if anyone sees any, let me know.
Was there some walkway, there was like a walkway to the deck, was that going to not exist anymore? It already does not exist?
Right, they were going to remove it.
Okay.
Moved it all.
Yeah. Okay.
Christina, do I need to like officially close that?
No, no, do not, but I'm looking at the the Carlina's Resolution of the Serpentine Drive that was last year. We used the Tolkien conditions there as well. And there is no time on that. We didn't specify time. So we specify a lot of the construction parking and, you know, posted the number of the manager and such. Construction site shall conform with the 4 foot fence, but there was no timeframes. We didn't put timeframes.
Does the town have any in for like building? Do they have any restrictions, like the building department?
You know, maybe we should just say something like eight to six.
Yeah. Just because it's such a small space and there's going to be a lot of in and out.
No, there's no particular timeframe required.
I, I, I think we should do something.
Yeah, I.
I do, especially in the summer months. Be different after Labor Day.
And eight to six, five days a week, six days a week.
All right.
Bye.
Yeah.
Yep, eight to six.
I mean, for, for, for exterior work now, I think interior finishing doesn't have to have the, the
No.
same sort of limits, just because it's, it should be less disruptive.
I agree.
Is that good for you, Christina, now?
Yeah, um, I'm just thinking that in the past, you know, since there is a parking, a little issue there. Is it going to be this interior work? You know, you still have trucks and all of that, so that's really up for a board to consider.
Uh, does anybody have any other thoughts on that?
Does the scale and the size of the truck go down and saw it? Is it diminished compared to the exterior type of work being done? You know, it's going to be just a, a ban.
Right.
Doing the interior work as opposed to.
Depends on what stage you're in.
Yeah. Because you're busy, when they do the right, like rough plumbing and electrical, you've got quite a few trucks. Then you got the insulation crew, then you got the sheetrock.
So I mean, do you?
Different amount of trucks.
It's just because typically our condition is that the construction vehicles must park on the site.
Right.
So this is, of limits, so this is a little different, so we can.
I know, I worked for us in that property a couple of days the past week.
So.
Right. And the road is very tight.
Yeah.
Um, so should we just say eight to six regardless of what's going on?
I, I doubt if people are, if there's interior construction that's not noisy, I doubt there'll be any complaints. So I don't know, do you think we need to specify both?
Yeah, I, I think maybe.
Yeah, because some, some guys like to start at seven o'clock in the morning.
Okay.
So what are you saying?
Punch, you happy with eight to six for interior and exterior?
Yes.
An interior, seven days a week?
No, 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 seven days. No way.
Eight to six, five days a week.
Yeah.
All construction.
Monday through Friday, right?
Gives you 50 hours a week.
Thank you for looking at it, Christine. Okay. Okay.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And no conditions for the.
Correct, no conditions on Emerson Lane. Okay, so we have, we can move on to other business. Uh, we have Ray correspondence regarding the board. Phil? What's going on with that?
Hey, hey, Bob, so when you called and asked us to discuss this tonight, I, I requested that we had, um, Chris, Tian, and Lori Beard Raymond in on this discussion because I, I, I don't know how we've gotten to this point exactly, and I, I sort of had hoped that we would get their input to kind of explain how we've gotten here.
I have Lori here with us.
And do we have Chris here or?
Chris is on vacation. Reed is outside.
Yeah, it's. I, I, we may need to discuss this at another time. Uh, Punch, what do you think? Because you, you, you know, you were here for this and, I mean, Tommy, it's the only person that wasn't here. Lynn and, and Lisa were both here.
I think a representative of the building department should be here, and I appreciate Lori being here, but I would like to hear from one of them as well.
Okay.
Anybody else feel?
Punch.
Do you want to have Lori speak, or do you want to wait till everyone's here so we get a, a better picture?
Phil.
Just to give you a picture, in the audience, we have Lori, we have Mr. Dalton, and we have Kim Ray. Yeah, they cannot hear your finishes.
Yeah, come up to the podium, please, and state your name.
I'm Kimberly Ray, Westervelt and Ray, and I represent TJ Dalton's Properties, Inc. And Timothy J. Dalton, his son TJ Dalton, Jr. Uh, they are the adjoining property owners of this property. In, in response to the question, Lori Beard Raymond, the permits examiner, was intimately involved in this and knows more than anybody else because back in 2018, when this application was originally made by the wards to do this redevelopment of the property, uh, Mary Bellard Ward, who was an owner architect, was submitting plans. She had numerous conferences with Ms. Raymond in advance of submitting the application. And, uh, it went to a full ZBA hearing. The ZBA made up its mind, and I'll flesh some of this in a bit, but subsequent to that, Ms. Raymond also had several communications with Lori Beard Raymond. And then suddenly, she wasn't involved anymore, but I think that this matter concerns the fundamental authority of the ZBA to determine whether or not applicants get variances and for what reasons. This one in particular. This one began in 2018. Uh, the Ward property is at 29A.
Excuse me, can I ask a question for a moment? Is this?
Yes, ma'am.
Phil, is this the subject of a work session, or should this be presented at, um, a hearing where the public could?
Um, the public, yeah, the public can hear and listen. Uh, we can discuss this at any point.
Okay, so he, here, here's what I would say, though, is that this is not a hearing, all right? This is not an appeal.
Enough.
This is just a, and I, I'm going to call this a discussion. Uh, and, uh, you know, there's, if, if after this discussion, uh, your client would like to file an appeal of the building department's decision to issue a building permit, then that would actually trigger a hearing on our part. I, you know, I'm hopeful we could maybe come to some sort of a, a resolution without having to do that, but, um, you know.
We do too.
I understand, I understand that Lori is here, and I'm, I'm glad that she is here. But somehow in 2018, this thing was supposed to get a hearing and, and, and perhaps need a variance. And now it somehow does not. So I, I really would like to get input from the building inspector to, just to see um, what, you know, how, why things are different this time around. And I did see there was something in the building permit saying that there would be no access from, from the, um, from the right-of-way. Um, but I, I, I think that we're much better off. I think we should do this next week. When we can maybe get some input from the building department, because I, I do want to hear the whole, the whole thing, and Kim, I, I, I don't, I, I'm not meaning to cut you off here.
No, 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 and it wasn't my intention to offer testimony. I was just trying to, I was just trying to frame the question. That's all, because it's odd. It's procedurally very, very odd.
Yes. I, I.
It's fine. We'll be glad to come back. That's I think preferable, probably.
I, I, I feel like it's, it's, it's best for us to get, get input from everybody here so that we can sort of feel our way through this thing.
Right. May I just ask from a procedural standpoint, though? I think you'd mentioned, or someone mentioned from the standpoint of what's being appealed. Uh, because this building permit was issued in 2021 in June. Um, and there wasn't a letter of denial issued because that cert, that process got circumvented. We don't know how. Because it should not have been. In 2018, you all issued, you, you issued a resolution that allowed the applicant the ability to come back and seek a variance to do the rest of this garage. Um, and that didn't happen, so from a procedural standpoint, I just want to understand, can we file an appeal of the building permit issuance? Which was in June of this year?
Yes.
Yes, Kim, we can.
Great, okay, great. And, and by the way.
Just, just so you know, fundamentally, this is essentially an enforcement issue in that the, um, the construction was permitted subject to them giving up the right to use that right-of-way because that by and of itself altered the, what, the, uh,
That's right.
setbacks worked there. That being said, it's, as I understand it, they, uh, they disregarded that and were using the right-of-way anyhow. So that is our, I guess, the first issue there. Would be the one of, of compliance with, um, the conditions.
And as we see it, we, we agree, this needs to be resolved. There's no question. I always think everything needs to be resolved. We have no interest in, in, uh, fighting about this, but access to that right-of-way needs to be prohibited. And so that's, that is what, just as a, as a preview, we would be asking for.
My understanding is that had been ignored.
Building department, you went, right?
No, because this, this building, the permit was issued, and we never, there was never a letter of denial issued.
Right.
So we weren't.
Kim, listen, there, there may be a, a good reason for that.
Right, I, I'm not, I'm not casting aspersions, and by the way, may I say, I, I wouldn't, I don't, never have one complaint against our building department. These guys and Lori, do their dead-level best in some really difficult situations, so that's not, that's not why we're here. We just want to be sure that the applicant doesn't use the right-of-way because she said she would not use the right-of-way. She said it.
Maybe save these comments for next week when.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I am now straying into testimony. I'm sorry about that. Yep.
Yeah.
We'll do, so it, so if I understand it, we can simply file an appeal of the issuance of the building permit?
Sure, I.
And be back before you next week? Will that work?
No, 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 no. If you're going to do that, then we're going to have to do 30-day noticing and the whole thing. Um, but we're happy to discuss it again next week and perhaps.
All right.
We could come to some sort of a, a, a meeting of the minds between, between the ZBA and the building department and your client um, and the applicant and, and have this worked out without an appeal being filed and/or being necessary.
That's great. That's certainly our preference. Thank you.
Will Chris be here next week?
Apparently, yeah. Even Reed, like, he had the shot yesterday, so he loved midday as well, and Chris will, yeah, he's out this week.
Okay.
Okay.
That's great. Thank you very, very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, one thing, Phil, on this, I, I don't think the issue is quite so much, you know, altering the, uh, or, uh, throwing out the building permit as it is enforcing it, because the building permit actually says on its face that they can't use that right-of-way. So if they're using it, then we have to basically figure out what do I do to enforce it.
But is that the jurisdiction of the ZBA to be enforcing?
Really more building, it really more should be the building department.
Right.
Right.
Okay, but I, I think that the time to discuss this now is next week.
Sounds good. Okay. Anybody have anything else? Phil, Lynn?
No. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then we will close the meeting at eight fourteen.
We'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion to close the meeting.
Second.
Okay, all in favor.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.